I will go ahead and call us to order for our work session here this morning, still. And start it with Al taking over on the capital improvement plan discussion to lead us through this.
Very good. All right, so we have sent you the capital improvement plan memo and also kind of the spreadsheet that shows not only this year's plan, which ultimately goes to the board for adoption, but also, at least initially, what's planned for the next four years after 2025. Basically, there's a CIP review team consisting of facilities management, IT, parks, sheriff, fiscal services, and the purchasing manager. And all projects that are submitted are evaluated on the following criteria: health and safety, legal liability, prior binding commitments and mandates, operational issues, external funding sources, annual operating and maintenance costs, life expectancy, and strategic alignment. So this year, we did receive a total of 48 project requests totaling about $19.8 million. Recommended are 34 for 2025 totaling $8.9 million. And 7.9 of that is scheduled to come out of the general fund and represents 0.225 mils, which is basically where the board has fixed an allotment for CIP out of the general fund. So the way this process works, it is collaborative. Basically, we come to an agreement on the final amount to recommend to the board with departments. And so what we've done the last few years is we have representatives of the larger departments that represent most of the capital improvements appear before the board in work session and give a brief overview of the capital improvement projects in their area of management. And so today, we'll have Mark Roush representing facilities. Tim is on spring break. We also have Tim Beck from IT. Parks, Ben Swayze is here. And then Sheriff is also out of town, so we do have Brian and Lindsay to represent her here today. So with that, I will just pitch it to Mark Roush.
Good morning. Apologize, rookie here, so bear with me. Basically, facilities management, we submitted 20 projects. Thirteen were recommended for a total of $2.7 million. A couple of our projects is one at juvenile detention center. It's our security electronics, the computers and touchscreens and so on. Average three to five years' life expectancy. We're a little over at six, a little over six right now for those. So that's one of the projects. Another one is for the microphone replacements at the courthouse. That is 22 years old, and those microphones are the gooseneck style, the original, from day one, other than replacements as failures. We're replacing those with new, modern, two-by-two ceiling tile microphones that are much more sensitive than the current microphone system.
All right. Open it up if anybody has questions or comments from the board. That's usually a good sign, but not always.
I'll take that. That's a good one for my first one. I'll take this as a win.
If I could just maybe mention one item on the list, but we do have 500,000 programmed in for the Fallsburg Dam. That basically is a placeholder amount for what we think we'll spend actually in 2025. And of course, additional expense once we land that project costs and bring it to the board for approval.
The end of the date will be much more than that.
It'll, yeah, estimates more around $4 million.
All right.
Easy peasy.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mark. And Tim?
I'll try to be as brief as Mark, but that was brief. Holy smokes. IT has brought forward three projects this year. Really, the first one is the highlighted one, and that is the 2025 LiDAR update. LiDAR is essentially 3D laser mapping of features. And this provides really for us, as it represents Kent County, two-foot contour maps across the county, heavily used by drain commission, outside engineering agencies, data that's publicly available and heavily used. So try to do it every 10 years, and we are due for that. So we fly under the state contract to leverage price, and that's about 200,000. And we have some on-base enhancements. That's the second one, just continued improvements to that platform as we move more through workflow and automation throughout the county. And then we have some correctional rewire of some of their legacy facilities out there to try to stay ahead of some of their initiatives. So those are the three we've got. Two other ones I brought forward on behalf of two other departments. One is the e-filing of 17th Circuit Court and the clerk's office. And there's representatives here to discuss those. But e-filing is probably the largest initiative we've seen from a workflow and automation perspective across the county in a number of years. So that one is there as well. And then lastly, the prosecutor's office has a request in recommended for digital evidence management. So they are struggling under a mountain of digital evidence in various forms and formats. This will streamline that process for them, as well as provide some video editing and redaction capabilities that they are sorely in need of. So that's what I got.
All right. Questions or comments from Commissioner Bujack, or from Commissioner Bujack, excuse me?
Thank you, Chair. I work for GE Aviation, and we love acronyms. And so we have this acronym before us, LiDAR, L-I. And for the benefit of all the commissioners, what is LiDAR?
It's in the description there. It stands for light detection and ranging.
Did that help you out there, Commissioner?
So essentially, if your fishermen think of sonar, right, it's billions of laser points. So they shoot a laser at the earth, they measure the response time, and with billions and billions of those data points, they can construct a 3D map.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not unique to GIS. It's used, your dentist might use it to put a 3D model of your teeth together. I mean, it's pretty, it's used everywhere these days.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I am going to tell my kids that we got to spend $200,000 on lasers. So nobody ruined the surprise. I just want to say a quick thanks. Usually, we talk about things that are happening, but to all of our IT department for the thing that really hasn't happened to Kent County, and that's like a major cybersecurity incident. And for those not familiar with how difficult that is, there's a lot of work that happens that's unsung heroes. So I just want to give credit for that not causing major disruptions to Kent County's operations. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Anyone else? So just follow up, Tim, on that, on the mapping. Is the mapping that you're talking about going to be available through the GIS access?
We provide it privately if it's requested to various engineering firms. The problem we have with releasing it through GIS is it is just so much data. So what we do is we make it available to the U.S. Geological Society, and it's available through them, through their explorer. So it's publicly available, but it's all consolidated up to them.
Yeah, but it's an incredible amount of data.
It is.
So it's not like I can get an app, put it on my phone, and have access to it all the time.
Um.
Or can I?
We don't have that kind of time. But yes and no, I guess, is the, is the government answer on that. And I hate to be like that. It is available in somewhat through your phone, but probably not to the, depending on what your needs are, to the level you might want. For example, LiDAR has the ability to strip vegetation layers out to look at contours if you're doing drainage or something. That may not be available on your mobile device, but other aspects might be, depending on what you're trying to do.
So if I want to know elevations at particular locations, I should be able to get something reasonably accurate.
Yes, you could. Correct.
Okay.
You're in the pond at Johnson Park, you know.
Ben, we're watching. All right. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Ben, speaking of which, you're up next.
Great. Thank you. So the Parks Department did submit nine projects for 2025. So six of them are being recommended for funding at 1.25 million dollars. I'd say there aren't a lot of quote-unquote sexy projects in our list this year. We have a big system. And as we talked a little bit about during the regular meeting, there are parts of the parks that wear out, right? So to start with, we have over 30 playgrounds in our park system. And typically, the useful life of those playgrounds are 20 years. So they get used heavily. There's always advances in technology. And honestly, nothing sadder than going to a park and seeing a playground that was put in in the 1970s or the 1980s. So we try to replace them on a regular basis. This year, we actually have two parks that we're doing playground replacements in. So the first one is Wabasis Campground, which is in the north half of the county. There are actually four playgrounds at Wabasis. So if you've been there before, there is, Wabasis is kind of divided into three different sections, right? So you have kind of the community park that is in the top end of the park. There's an enclosed shelter at Wabasis, and then you have the campground and beach as well. So the beach playground was actually replaced about five years ago and is in really good condition. But as part of this, CIP will be replacing the other three. So there's one that serves, is in the middle of the actual campground. So if you're camping, you can go out of your camper and get to it. There's one in the upper area, and there's one that serves the enclosed shelter as well. We're hoping to replace them all at the same time to capture some, hopefully, savings by doing that. The other playground replacement project is actually at Millennium Park. So if you've been down there, there's actually a core area of three different playgrounds. One of them was replaced a couple of years ago. We're looking at replacing the other two. And we're actually using part of our Millennium Park maintenance fund to do that as well. So half the cost of that project will come out of the CIP, half of it will come out of the Millennium Park maintenance fund. Besides playgrounds, another thing that we have a lot of in our system is asphalt. So every year, we need to make sure that we are replacing and maintaining our asphalt services. One of the things that I'll be tasking my department with over the coming years is to actually put together a more concrete asphalt replacement process and program, right? So right now, our process is typically, as the budget starts, we take a look at the map, we go out, we do some investigations, and figure out what are the areas that most need replacing, right? So we need to be a little bit more strategic about it, because in my opinion, we're not replacing our asphalt fast enough to make sure that we are able to completely replace all the asphalt in the system in 20 to 25 years, which is going to be the useful life of those surfaces. With that, we haven't got a chance to do that yet. I've been spending a lot of my time in the past year on the master plan, so we're planning on doing that for the upcoming year. Doesn't mean we can stop replacing asphalt in the meantime. So the park that is in the most needed repair this year is Fallsburg Park, specifically the area around the enclosed shelter. So we've included that in the, in the list as well. One of the unique projects that I'm hoping will be successful and that I'm proud of my staff for putting forward is a park automation demonstration project. So interestingly enough, we do not have any automatic gates in any of our 43 parks, even though our ordinance says specifically that, especially in some areas, they need to be closed. A lot of surrounding parks department have been successful, automated gates. There's a real cost associated with that. So gates have to be open and closed outside of the typical working hours of our employees. So we are typically paying a seasonal two hours every time to go out and open the gate and go out and close the gate. So that's essentially four hours that we have to pay for those to do that. So the other half of that automation-
Four hours like every day to do that?
What's that?
Four hours every day to do that?
Yes. Yeah. So.
Per gate?
Yeah. Yeah. There's a lot of money that, well, not necessarily per gate, right? So there's, so there's, there's some that, there is one gate, but there's some where we can send them to multiple places, right? But we can't take an employee that's scheduled to close the gate at Luton Park and then send them down to Creekside. You know, it's 50 minutes across the county. So, so, yeah. I shouldn't have said it's per gate, but there's definitely, it's not like we have one employee that we send around to all the gates in the system.
You know, in the past, I've suggested that we are gatekeepers, right? I didn't know that we really were.
Yeah. So the other half of this project that I'm really excited about is autonomous mowers, which is something that's starting to become more commonplace in park systems. So if you haven't seen it, think basically a Roomba for your lawn, but on a much bigger scale. So really proud of the Parks Operations Staff. They actually put together a plan for nearly half of our parks to be able to either put in gates or autonomous mowers or both in order to save costs. So we have a return on investment calculated for each one of those parks. Some of them, return on investment is less than a year. Some of them, it's extended out, but none of them were more than eight years. But from my perspective, I feel like we need to demonstrate that it can be successful first. So we've picked Creekside Park in Gaines Township. We picked that one specifically because of the, there's some utility work that needs to be done in order to do these things for the gate and the charging station for the mowers. All of the utilities are near there. It's also a place where, because it is, there isn't a park home base near it, we actually do contract mowing out for that area. So it's a little bit easier for us to track the costs of what the mowing are. So our plan is to do the demonstration project in Creekside Park in 2025, be able to come back to the administration with the report and hopefully get funding for more park automation projects in the future. So with that, that was just a couple of them. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about any other projects on the list.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Wood.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, definitely interesting to see these two pilots. You know, I realize that an autonomous mower is far different than an autonomous vehicle, but this is a new enough technology where every so often, something doesn't go the way it should. And so I guess my question is, what staff capacities do we have for when, when the, when the autonomous mower ends up in the creek? Or, you know, it keeps trying to bore through that tree and can't seem to figure it out? Do we have, does it require a specific kind of tech? Or is it just someone who can lift it up, move it, and make sure, you know, like when the Roomba I have at my home keeps knocking on my kid's door and doesn't realize it has to turn around?
Yeah, that's, that's essentially what will be, what will be needed. So the, you know, if we have technology issues, it'll actually be served by a contract. So, you know, the contract that we have, they'll be able to go to serve that. But, you know, talking to some of the other park districts that have used this technology as well as the vendor, the biggest problem is that there is a big red button on the back of the mower. So if there's an emergency, anybody can go and hit it, so it stops, right? So you get kids in the park, you know, it's doing its thing, they go out and hit it, and now you have to send the staff out there basically to reset it. So there are a lot of things that we're going to need to work through. You know, the fact that while they're, so the mowers are large, it's not, it's not like a Roomba where you'd be able to just pick it up and carry it away. But we know that, you know, people are going to be interacting with these things. It's set up so if it leaves the geo-fenced area, it's basically a big brick, right? So somebody's not going to be able to take it and use it to mow their lawn. But we do have people that, in our parks, and partake in vandalism just for vandalism's sake. So being able to understand that and how people interact with it will be something that we need to work out as well.
And then my follow-up, you know, our current, as you mentioned, we contract at this park for mowing, but we do have some internal employees for, for mowing. Is that, are those seasonal employees? Are those, is it one of the tasks that our permanent parks employees participate in? Essentially, tell us a little bit about the, kind of, the other side of our current mowing operations.
So, yeah, so you're just talking about the contracted mowing?
And also in-house, I guess. Or, you know, is that, how do we mow our grass in, in our parks?
Yeah. So the way our park system is set up is we have 10 regions, right? So each region is assigned a series of probably anywhere between four and six parks and maybe some trail sections as way, as well. And they're responsible for the maintenance in all of their parks. And for the majority of the parks, that is a crew that goes out, they'll trailer up, trailer up mowers, they'll go to a park. If it's not in their home base, they'll mow it, they'll weed whip it, they'll take out the trash, they'll take care of it. So on a, on a weekly basis, they're out there doing that, those, those main tasks. And then on a daily basis, they're out there doing things like changing out the trash, making sure their westerns are clean, you know, taking stock, pulling gates and all of, all of that sort of stuff. So in some areas, from a cost perspective, it just doesn't make sense for us to have somebody that trailers up, goes out there and mows. So we have about a half dozen parks and areas in our system where we do contract with people to go out and mowing, which was very cost advantageous up until this year. So we rebid those contracts every three years, and essentially, the cost of the contract doubled. For the same reason, everything else is doubling, right? So it used to be your seasonal mowing employee was a, you know, college kid or a high school kid that was making $7.50 an hour, and those are $15 to $20 an hour jobs now, the same reason we pay our seasonals $15 to $20 an hour. So finding ways to strategically feather in new technology to help those cost issues are going to be good for us. But clearly, it's not going to displace any of our full-time or really any of our part-time employees either.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, Ben. Yeah, I'm concerned about the autonomous mowing, only because I know as a grandfather of six grandkids, when they're over and I'm mowing, it's like flies to a light. They just, they got to be around that. And I, I just, I worry about, like Commissioner Wooden says, this kind of a matter of when, you know, there's going to be a problem. And I'm just thinking, what's the advantage of having autonomous, given we're in a very litigious society? And if those rough gangs, or whatever you call them, that mow the bigger areas, those are pretty big. And I hate to take away the human element, element of that process, because you see kids in the area, you can shut her down right away. And who knows how these autonomous things are going to work? So I'm glad, I hope the test period we do is extremely thorough, because kids, by their nature, they're going to be all about running around, especially if they don't, if they're not supervised, and wanting to be around that machine. I just would prefer to keep a human being on top of it, I guess, so.
Yeah. So I appreciate that comment. So there is the opportunity, right, to do the mowing when people aren't at least allowed in the park, right? So even though we pull gates and everything like that, we know that we do have people that are in our parks after hours when they're not supposed to. But I think from our perspective, the idea, when it's completely autonomous, 10 o'clock comes up, the gate closed, make sure everybody's out, 10:15, the mowers come out, they do their thing. So at least make sure that the work isn't going on when, you know, there are, when there are supposed to be people in the park. But the, I think the technology has, has advanced pretty significantly as well. So I know if you've been to Costco or Sam's Club, they have the autonomous scrubbers, right? So my kids love those things. And same thing, it's, anybody gets too close to it, doesn't have to bump into anything, right? Anything gets too close to it, and it changes its pattern or shuts down. So I think the technology is there to avoid those, those conflicts, but certainly something that we're going to be considering as we're working on the demonstration project, too.
Commissioner Paklitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ben, I'm looking at the playground replacements and wondering if you currently or have thought of sort of working with other municipalities or schools on bulk purchasing of playground equipment, knowing that, you know, obviously, each site is unique in terms of the, which you actually install, but there's only a limited number of providers of those materials. So is that something that you all currently do or have considered doing in order to sort of take advantage of bulk pricing?
Yeah, yep. So I will say that it is something that I have thought about, but that's essentially as far as that I have gotten, right, is, but I think, especially with my experience in local government prior to this, I do think that there are opportunities for us to further those relationships for bulk purchasing opportunities. And getting away from playgrounds for a second, I think that resurfacing of, you know, parking lots and trails especially, is something where there is potentially a lot of advantages to that. For example, right now, the Kent County Road Commission does a program where they will bid out crack ceiling for their projects. But as part of that bidding process, their, the successful bidder is required to extend that pricing to local municipalities as well. So, you know, I'd hope to talk to the road commission and get something where, you know, not only do we have our, you know, 100 miles of paved pathways in our system, but Cascade Township has 18 miles, and Ada Township has 19 miles, and Plainfield Township, you know, is building that. So something where if we could get all on the same page, you know, and give the road, even give the road commission a list, you know, six months beforehand and bid that out all at the same time. For things like paving, there is a lot of cost benefit to doing it in bulk.
Commissioner Bujack.
Thank you, Chair. The building department came through and, and no questions. And you're getting grilled. It's like all these questions.
I love talking about parks. I'll stand up here all day.
Yeah, I had a question about the way-
Well, that's not happening, by the way.
The wayfinding system. It says that it's a document. Is this like a paper-based, like, map that you're creating and printing up? Or is it an app on a phone? Or is it a combination of both paper and app so that you can be paperless? How does that work?
Yeah. So what this particular project is, if you are familiar, there's a nonprofit organization called West Michigan Trails. West Michigan Trails and Greenspace, actually, I think is their full name. They are a nonprofit that focuses on regional trail systems. Basically, you know, I've found that when people talk about West Michigan, that means, you know, 11 different things to 10 different people. So West Michigan could mean Grand Rapids area, you know, it could mean, you know, Grand Rapids and Ottawa County and Muskegon County. So for West Michigan Trails, it actually means 18 county area in West Michigan. So pretty big area. One of the projects that they finished up last year is putting together a comprehensive guide for developing onsite wayfinding signs for regional trails, right? So one of the issues, again, when you have all of these different organizations that own different section of trails, and they run into each other in auspicious places, you want to make sure that the user experience from one section of trail to the next section of trail is the same, right? So what they did is developed this trail guidance, so when you're putting wayfinding signs on your trails, they're the same as you go from area to area to area. We've been waiting for a couple of years for them to finish, and they finished in October. So what this process is, is basically to take the wayfinding guide that West Michigan Trails developed and put a new onsite wayfinding system for our four regional trails. So the Paul Henry Thornapple Trail, Kent Trails, the M6 Trail, and the Pioneer Trail. We're hoping, I think we will actually be the first entity to kind of use their system, but we want to take the lead so as Plainfield Township and Ada Township and other organizations are building their trail systems, that like, oh, yep, this is a regional system, we all need to use the same signage system so that that user experience is unified.
Physical signs.
They're physical signs, yep. So they will, you know, you get to, there'll be key areas where there'll be maps on there. Some of them will just be, you know, the mile markers. One of the systems that they adopted is the three-word system for emergency services. So I don't know if you guys have heard of that, but basically, the entire, I think the entire country is mapped on basically, I think it's three-foot by three-foot grids, or maybe it's a little bit bigger than that. But essentially, anywhere you are, there's three words associated with your grid, right? So each one of these mile markers at the bottom will have the three words. And if you are having an emergency and you call 911 and you call into dispatch center, you basically give them those three words, and they'll know exactly where you are. So it incorporates things like that. So some of them will be really simple signs, some of them will be, you know, bigger signs to say you are here, and this is how you get to Ada Trails, and this is how you get to Kent Trails, and so on and so forth.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Ben. Thank you for being here. I'm wondering, as kind of a follow-up on Chris's question, or Commissioner Paklitz's question, that are there opportunities, especially when you talked about the gates, for our local municipalities to take some of that responsibility for maintenance for some of these parks long-term? I mean, if we had, you know, townships or whatever doing some of these more long-term maintenance tasks, is there something that we could do there to lower some of our costs?
So I think there are opportunities. We do have partnerships like that currently, both ways. So right now, we own a park in Kentwood, Paris Park, which is down on 60th. We own the property, but we actually, for lack of a better term, lease it to the city of Kentwood to operate as a park. So it's a partnership park where we consider it a Kent County park, they consider it a Kentwood park, but they have all of the costs associated with it. In fact, they're doing a renovation project in there with some of their village funds this upcoming year. So on the flip side, we have Proven Trails, which is in Grand Rapids Township, which is actually a city of Grand Rapids property that we maintain as a Kent County, Kent County park. Again, great opportunity for a county resident, a city resident to get out there, but in that instance, it makes more sense for us to be the operator of that park than it does for the city of Grand Rapids. So we have done that both ways. I think that's certainly something we could explore, really for some of our smaller parks as well. So I think it's harder for our local municipalities to, municipalities to manage a 300, 400, 500-acre park, but we do have some of our- of our smaller parks as well. So I think it's harder for our local municipalities to, municipalities to manage a 300, 400, 500 acre park. But we do have some of our parks in our system that are smaller. And if those are in local municipalities where they have the capacity to do some of those maintenance tasks, I think that's something we could explore in the future.
All right. Anyone else on this one?
Now, I have something for you, Ben. I mean, I'm glad to see that we're doing the repaving of the bike paths. But what is it that causes these things to buckle so quickly? Because it seems to me at Millennium Park, even the year after you put it down, they're buckling. And now that we're going to be self-insuring, I'm a little more sensitive to, those are liability issues as well.
Yeah. So our, the bane of our trail's existence is, for lack of a better term, swamp willow. It's a very aggressive woody plant that grows all over the county. We will have new asphalt and that swamp willow will be coming up through that new asphalt in the matter of a couple of months. So we try, do try to take proactive measures. So we, in the past, have rented a vibratory plow, which is essentially, you know, put a plow in the ground, you know, four to five feet and run it the length of the pathway is on both sides to try to cut it. Sometimes it's successful, sometimes it's not. But anywhere that we have pathways that are going through natural areas like that, it's the, it's the woody growth on the side of the, the trails are popping through. And it's not a unique to our park system. Anybody that owns a, owns a trail system battles that on a regular basis.
And they haven't invented pavement that's immune to that yet?
They haven't. No. That's a million dollar idea, though.
Well, we'll see that next year, maybe.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Antor.
I mentioned that swamp willow, it's impossible to deal with. We have a private road that even though we cut way back in hopes that that would, it's still, it's invasive. And if you ever figure out how to get it done, let me know because we've been battling that for years. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. Sorry it took so long. For our last presentation this morning from the Sheriff's Department, we have Brian Muir, the undersheriff, and Lindsey Reams, our chief deputy for corrections. We'll get a two for this morning.
We do. Both Lindsey and I helped put these together as deputy chiefs. So we knew a little bit of the history between all those projects together here. So one of the projects that I'll be talking about is our lasers. So we're also looking at a LiDAR system for our crime scene in our accident investigation. If you've ever been stuck in traffic before, you know, you want the roadways opened right away. These LiDAR systems, similar to what Mr. Beck had described, allow us to get those millions of points of references, get the vehicles out of the roadway, open those roads back up. It's also become a standard in almost every criminal investigation. I used to see hand sketching of crime scenes. Now the LiDAR is the standard and it's requested and required for almost any serious investigation that we do. So having a LiDAR system that's just on a monopole that we can put out, shoot those lasers out, get those scenes, diagrams rather quickly helps us in a lot of different ways. The other project we'll talk about for myself is the parking. You know, we benefited very greatly from all of the additional staff that you've provided us. However, now we're finding that our facility is a little compact for the number of spots needed to park all of that staff. And then the additional training that we do at that facility, we're hosting training about 265 days a year at the sheriff's office. And when we bring that additional staff in or host those meetings with, through our, our emergency management or the committees that we participate in, we find that parking is the number one complaint and is truly an issue that we need to address sometime in the near future.
I'm sure some of my colleagues will ask you all to take the bike next time.
All right. So I'm going to go over the remainders, which all pertain to the Corrections Division for the most part. So I'm just going to list them off. Most of them are going to be projects that you guys have probably seen in the past or at least heard about in the past. They're just a continuation of projects that we have already started. And a lot of them, you've probably heard in conversation because they pertain mostly to the age of the building and some of the general maintenance things that come along with that. So the first thing I have on this list is the jail dental equipment. Again, it's just a replacement of the equipment that we've had for the last 30 years. That just is no longer suitable for what they're doing. The jail elevator improvements, I think a couple of other divisions have some projects related to elevator improvements. The elevators are 30 years old and they just need to be brought up to code at this point. Key control, that's phase two. So we're currently in phase one of that. Safety and security concerns, obviously around how we store our keys, where the keys are kept and who has access to the keys. On top of that, we'll be working through accreditation at some point this year for the Corrections Division and into next year. And we know that key control is one of their core standards that we're going to have to meet. The card access system is in phase three. So we'll be wrapping up areas that are least populated at this point in time. So the first two phases were our most populated and most trafficked areas. This last phase is going to be the less trafficked, less populated and administrative areas. It will also bring our entire campus up to one card access system versus two separate systems that we're currently managing. Capstone repair, cleaning, sealing and roof inspection is probably better discussed by a facilities person. But basically what that one comes down to is we're seeing some damage because of water, both on the exterior of the building, which is causing damage to some of the bricks, and then also some issues with the roofing. So that's what that one pertains to. Live scan fingerprint equipment replacement. To keep up to the state standards and in order to interface with their equipment, we have to replace those on a schedule. Typically, it's every five to six years. So that's what this one is. And then our general carpet replacement. We're a 24/7, highly trafficked facility all hours of the day. So obviously there's a lot of wear and tear on that. We have over 15 housing units, not including our administrative areas. So that CIP usually covers one, possibly two areas a year. So when we're talking about a rotation at that speed of 15 plus areas, it's actually not as big of a turnover and replacement as what it sounds like. So that's what I have.
All right. Questions? Mr. Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. I actually wanted to talk about one of the projects that wasn't recommended, the outdoor warning siren system enhancement. So, you know, this was something that Commissioner Green, Teal and I heard a little bit more as we, our three districts were impacted the most by the tornado that went through, as well as Commissioner Antor. And, you know, certainly we're able to share ways that we can improve our response. And one of them was the system enhancement. You know, I forgot the time it, in between the detection of a tornado touching down and the release of the siren, but it was a month, a number of minutes. And also just reading through the, the fact that we can't isolate it does create a perception that, oh, it's, it's, there's a tornado, but it's not in my area. So I don't have to worry about it. And I get why it's not in the recommended list, given the other priorities that have also existed for quite some time. Could we talk a little more about what are our plans to pay for such an investment in the future? And also could we confirm, this is the amount for just the system upgrade, that the, the number for the sirens cost, that's more to demonstrate what's already been invested by other municipalities, not an added cost after we make the upgrade?
Well, there would be an added cost just to update that system to the current technology that we're using with the 800 megahertz system and the activation. But I don't think this project is a finished, dead project at all. It's just being reinvested into where can we find the most funding and get the most community cooperation to fund this initiative and expand that siren system throughout the county. So instead of just taking a stab at trying to make a Band-Aid to get the current system up to date, we really need to get a better idea of what it needs to be done to make sure that system's consistent across the county.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Boojak.
Thank you, Chair. I had an opportunity to go to the sheriff's department, wanted to get a copy of the accident report. And when I got there, I couldn't find a parking spot. I drove around and I, I was like, what's going on? Is this typical? And they said, yeah, the, you know, parking's very, very, you know, always full there. And so my question is, this, this enhancement, how, looking into the future, you know, they say you build it, they will come. Will this be enough for how, what, what do you anticipate? That this will cover us for another year or two and then we're going to be back to where we are right now? How, how do we have enough, is this enough space? Will we need more?
So, so this should address the additional needs needed by the sheriff's department. But we are working with Tim Bradshaw just on the overall county master plan as to what that redesign would look like with the new administration building and the new rework of any roadways that are there. So there could be substantial increased traffic there and parking will be a concern for anyone that's on the campus. But this will definitely address the needs that are there for the sheriff's office, hopefully alleviate the needs for the public to find parking. But I do think we're trying to work along with facilities and figure out what a long-term solution would be.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. If not, thank you so much for answering questions in junior presentation. That is the last of the presentations on the CIP this morning. So I will move to the next item, public comment. If anyone wishes to address this one, we do so at this time. You have three minutes. I see no one. We will go to miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous items? Commissioners, Commissioner Coleman?
Just real quick, thanks to everybody who was involved in the CIP process. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of deliberation and just appreciation for all of that. And with all the lasers and robots, it might've been the most exciting one I've been to. So.
It'd be a good thing Dee Jones wasn't here today. All right. If nothing else, we are adjourned.